Hi everyone, can you guys hear me? Is that loud enough? I don't want to scream. It seems like we don't really need the mic. Good evening, my name is Josh Cantor and I'm the founder of the ABU Education Fund and our related organization, The Alliance for Better Utah. The ABU Education Fund is a nonpartisan, 511 super organization that's dedicated to good governance and increasing civic engagement. During the political season, we see an opportunity to work toward increasing civic engagement through a series of forums and debates. Our forum series is called the LDS Values Forums and are designed to bring together both Democrats and Republicans of the LDS faith who are willing to have an open and frank discussion about how their religious beliefs and interpretations of their church's doctrine influence their political choices and party affiliation. It's proved to be a vibrant discussion of the intersection of faith and politics, two topics that are so often avoided in polite company. Our second LDS Values Forum will be held at Utah Valley University on November 3rd. So if that's of interest to anyone, please come to join us. In contrast to the debate commissions focused on congressional and statewide offices, our debate series is designed to engage the public in their local elections, to give candidates an opportunity they don't often get, and to give voters a chance to interact with the politicians who quite frankly will have the most day-to-day impact on their lives. This year, we're sponsoring three legislative debates in addition to tonight's school board debate. For those of you who may live in the same area, we're hosting a debate between Zach Robinson and Robert Spindel, candidates for State House 49 tomorrow night. On Wednesday, we'll host a debate between Karen Kwan and McKay Jensen, candidates for House District 34.
Thursday?
Thursday? Sorry, Thursday, nothing tomorrow. And on October 17th, we'll host a debate between Christine Pacey and Bruce Cutler, candidates for House District 44. As in the past, we're pleased to partner with the John R. Park Debate Society of the University of Utah for our debate series. The John R. Park Debate Society was founded in 1869. It's hosted more than 30 campaign debates and issued forums over the past decade, featuring community organizations ranging from the Utah Movement to the American Civil Liberties Union, and politicians ranging from Governor Gary Herbert to former mayor of Salt Lake City, Rocky Anderson. The Debate Society is recognized as a 2016 University of Utah Beacon of Excellence and is ranked in the top 10 nationally and number one in the PAC-12 by the National Parliamentary Debate Association. The director of the Debate Society and tonight's debate moderator is Mr. Michael Middleton. In addition to being the Debate Society's director, Michael is an Assistant Professor of Argumentation and Public Discourse in the Department of Communication at the University of Utah. He has over 20 years of experience in competitive debate and argumentation pedagogy, and I had to practice those words, thanks for sending those. I'd like to welcome all of you tonight, to thank our candidates Lisa Cummins and Erin Preston, to thank our Debate Society partner, and to thank our communications partner, public radio station KCBW, who will be recording and rebroadcasting tonight's debate as well as our other debates. We welcome you to stay after the debate for a half hour and meet and greet with the candidates, and encourage you to join the ABU Education Fund's mailing list, which you can do here in person or visit our website at abuedfund.org, or the Alliance for Better Utah at betterutah.org. So with that, I would like to turn things over to Michael Middleton. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, my name is Mike Middleton and I'm the director of the John R. Park Debate Society of the University of Utah. I'll be the moderator for tonight's debate and look forward to facilitating a conversation between the two candidates with us tonight, who are running for a seat on the Utah before the Utah State School Board representing District 11. I want to take this opportunity to invite you all to welcome the two candidates, Ms. Lisa Cummins and Ms. Erin Preston, to the debate before I introduce the format. So welcome them. Tonight's debate will be organized in four parts. Once I invite her, now that the candidates are seated, they'll have three minutes to introduce themselves. Following that, we'll engage in a moderated discussion during which time each candidate will have an opportunity to answer each question. Their answers will be limited to one minute and 30 seconds each. The issues the candidates will discuss during this portion of the debate were drawn from issues suggested by each candidate, but members of the used John R. Park Debate Society were at the final questions, and neither candidate has had the opportunity to preview those questions. During this portion of the discussion, I reserve the right to ask follow-up questions of either candidate, or offer a one-minute rebuttal period to either candidate as the discussion dictates. After the moderated discussion, I'll ask members of the audience if they have any questions for the candidate. At that time, I ask that you wait until you're recognized by me, that you keep your questions brief, and that you frame your question in such a way that each candidate can speak to the issue you raise. Finally, each candidate will have three minutes to offer closing remarks. The order of introductions, questions, and closing statements has been predetermined by a coin flip, and there'll be a timekeeper who is sitting in the front row of the auditorium to give them those time signals. Before the debate begins, please join me in turning off your cellphones, pagers, or anything else that might go beep in the night, or otherwise interfere with tonight's recording. Additionally, I would like to ask that during each portion of the debate, refrain from any interruptions that might be picked up by the reporter. With that, I'd like to begin by asking for introductions from the two debaters, two candidates, and we'll begin with Ms. Lisa Cummins.
Can you guys hear me? Can everyone hear me? I'm gonna probably take this mic out, so a little bit more closer you can hear me clear. My name is Lisa Cummins. I am a resident of Harriman. I've lived in Harriman for over 11 years, have lived in Utah for over 20 years. I am a mother of five beautiful children, one girl and four boys. I have been a vocal parent about Common Core for the last six years. I have traveled all over the state of Utah, talking about the federal intrusions that are coming into our state that have and are continuing to impact parents, teachers, and children on a very personal level. With that messaging, I've vocalized local control, and I've helped parents what they can do to navigate the school system to help their children more. I've talked to teachers who have been perplexed about what's going on, feeling like they're being put between a rock and a hard place, having to teach in their classroom and choosing between their career and the children. They are not at fault at this, at all, and parents need to recognize that. I think everybody's in an emotional state right now as they're watching their children suffer through this education process. The college and career ready montage has been a joke, and it's meant for them to fail. It's not meant for them to get into university. I think universities are making that very clear with more and more remedial classes. But that has been my going-forward call, my clarion call if you will, that parents are in charge, that they are the experts of their children, that local control is best and not federal strings from the federal government through the state.
(Inaudible) How my glasses stretch that far. My name is Erin Preston. I am originally a farm kid from Idaho. Grew up on a farm that also contains my grandparents, my great-grandma, aunts, uncles, and cousins. We worked a farm, and I worked in my family construction company with them. I've been working on construction sites since I was eight years old. I grew up and became an accidental student. My family wasn't necessarily focused on sending their kids to college, however, teachers saw in me something that I hadn't seen in myself and helped prepare me. So when I took this test my junior year, I got a letter back from BYU that says if you come here and get the same test scores, we'll give you a 50% scholarship. I took him up on the offer, went to BYU, graduated quickly, went on to BYU Law School, and graduated from BYU Law School as well. Growing up, I had learned the value of hard work certainly well. I also learned the value of being accountable for your actions and doing what is right. When you grow up next to your grandparents, that's a pretty good home. Went to work at the Securities and Exchange Commission. My first professional job was prosecuting stockbrothers in the state of Utah. From there, I went into business and managed a legal publisher, legal publishing company where we closed regional manager over a seven-state region. Quit after my youngest was born. It was too hard to be on the road all of the time. Thought I would stay home for a while, but quickly became involved in education. My oldest had just recently graduated high school, and I had some frustrations with some things that had gone on in his education, and I knew my kids who were coming up were not going to learn well with the current mode of instruction. So I became involved in starting an international baccalaureate school founded on the idea of inquiry-based education. Providence Hall is what came out of that. I was the board chair for three, I was a founder, board chair for three years, superintendent for four, and after, and for the last two and a half years, I have worked as an education attorney, working with districts, students, parents throughout the state of Utah. During the last five years, I've also been involved in legislative advocacy for student and parent rights. This has led me in a lot of interesting directions, and during the time that I've been doing this, I've been able to advocate for parents, teachers, and overall fiscal issues of several multiple task forces, including two that were dedicated to education funding in the state of Utah and what we could do better. The reason I'm running for this office is because after sitting through all of these meetings, all these legislative meetings, all of these State Board of Education meetings, I've begun to get pretty deep on understanding what's going on, and I've begun to form some pretty solid opinions on ways that we could do it better. I can only sit in the back of the room and have opinions for so long before I raise my hand, write my name on a ballot, and say, "I think I can do better," or at least, "I think I can do something different that right now might be better for what we've got." That's why I'm running for State Board of Education.
Thank you both for those introductions. Several of the issues that you mentioned in your introductory statements are issues that we'll touch on in today's debate, and we'll begin by addressing the topic of teacher shortage in Utah with our first question. According to Deseret News on September 28, 2016, a new report from Envision Utah finds that Utah's teacher shortage is the number-one education-related concern for residents with almost 80% of respondents expressing concern that schools are unable to find enough teachers for their students. Furthermore, the State Office of Education reports that 42% of new teachers quit within five years. How would you, or how would each of you, reverse this trend if elected and encourage teachers to stay in our public education system? Ms. Preston, you'll address this question first.
I was in a recent interim session, and had both sessions that... Both of the education committees from the Senate and House, there along with a bunch of education leaders, including most of the superintendents in the state. They asked by show of hands for everybody, all of the superintendents who are currently experiencing a teacher shortage, to raise their hands. A lot of hands went up. I think a few of them who didn't have their hands up may be fibbing. We have a severe teacher shortage. It's getting worse all the time. There are certain things that contribute to that. I know Lisa and I differ on what those things are. My first thing is pay. New teachers make $32,000 a year. Teachers with master's degrees make $34,000 a year. One of my best friends, who I go walking with every week, has a part-time job cleaning houses. She has a master's degree in five years of teaching experience. This is how she provides for her family. That is a shame. That can't be what continues to happen. We need to attract new people into education, and with these different graphics, they're not coming. Second, or perhaps first, is respect for teachers. Pay certainly factors into that, but there's also just the way that we have begun treating teachers, and it's not acceptable what I have seen. So I'm frequently an attorney in situations where things become very difficult. I'd like to have a teacher bill of rights, where once names begin to be called and bad things happen, teachers can end those conversations.
So first off, I am against teachers' bill of rights, only because I'm not clear on what the repercussions on parents will be. I'd like to know what the repercussions would, what that would fully entail, because parents are the experts and they're the primary caretakers of their children's education, and their voices need to be heard just as much. That said, with teachers, they're just stuck between a rock and a hard place, like I have said. Last night, Representative Carol Moss talked about teacher, the teacher shortage. It's over, it's 900 in the state of Utah, it's 500 in other states. This is a national problem, and this problem was predicted and planned for years ago. I read about this four years ago, and so if they're knowing, if they knew this was coming down the track, why wait until there's a crisis now? Right now, I have in my hand the Teacher Pedagogical Assessment, and it's talking about national credentialing. We are not, or I am not, for a national credentialing. In the U.S. Constitution, 10th Amendment, the federal government has no right to dictate education here in the state of Utah or any other state in the nation. And this is what's coming down the pike, the micro-credentialing, where the teachers are gonna have to renew their credentialing every three to five years and start from scratch to prove that they're teachers. It is wrong, it is moral, and it's unethical.
Ms. Preston, you mentioned the issue of respect for teachers, and Envision Utah also found that 75% of respondents said they do not think the best and brightest want to become teachers, which they viewed as indicative of the fact that teaching is not respected as a career. Since you brought that topic up, what, in addition to the teacher's bill of rights, or how specifically do you think the teacher's bill of rights would help address that particular problem that's discouraging people from entering the teaching profession?
The teacher bill of rights is actually my own idea. This came out of being in a lot of adversarial situations where I, as an attorney, was brought in to handle conflicted situations. I'm not talking about a 90, I'm not talking about a 100% problem, I'm talking about a 100% problem. Most parents do a great job of advocating for their kids, and we'd want to encourage this, but I've been in too many situations where teachers are called names, personal attacks, sometimes physical attacks, and that's what I'm talking about with that. The overall teacher shortage, or respect for teachers, is a much bigger picture than that. That's an effect of it, it's not the cause of it. Overall, we need to be showing our teachers more respect at the legislative, at the State Board level, and at other levels that permeate down to our children. Our children understand how much we respect our teachers. It's a mixed bag right now. We need to do better.
Ms. Cummins, would you like to further address that topic?
Well, she said it's 1%, so I don't know if it's a mixed bag all entirely. Also, you know, she's an attorney with layer and layer, and so, you know, she's gonna see those problems firsthand. In the classroom, I don't think it's that widespread. However, I do think that teachers need respect. Everybody needs respect. Parents need respect, teachers need respect. They are being forced beyond teaching in their classrooms. They're being scripts, they're giving scripts to teach. They are being mandated or regulated beyond their capacity to perform. Where has the UEA been on these, for these teachers? I know that, I was one of several parents that fought for the parent, for the teacher pay ratio to be withdrawn against the testing. Where was the UEA on that? Where was Erin on that? I didn't see her on that. Where was, you know, the NEA on that? There were nowhere to be found. These teachers need help, and parents are out there, ready to help them.
Let's move on to the next question, but if you want to swing back to that, the teacher again. Ms. Cummins, you mentioned in your previous answer the question of teacher credentialing. And one effort to solve the teaching shortage in Utah has been the Utah State Board of Education passing a new rule permitting schools to hire employees to teach certain subjects without a formal education in teaching practices. One Utah teacher was quoted in the Washington Post on August 15, 2016, as saying that this new policy is, quote, "absolutely demoralizing and insulting because it implies that knowledge in a subject area is all that is necessary to qualify someone to teach." Advocates argue, however, that this policy allows more teachers to become employed and is the best way to solve the teacher shortage. What is your opinion on this policy? Is there a way to reduce the shortage of teachers while also ensuring that they are qualified? And if so, how would you go about doing that?
It's interesting that you have to quote the Washington Post and not a salient Tribune article or a teacher here, and yes, teachers are saying the exact same thing, that it's unfair, that it's a slap in the face for all of the work that they've done, and quite frankly, I agree with them. They have classroom management skills that these new teachers will not have. However, the regulations and the mandates will still apply, and these people that come in with just a bachelor's degree will have to be under those same mandates and regulations that the teachers are now. Teachers are leaving. I had two teachers tell me last night that they're considering moving early. I've had teachers come and tell me that they left early because, and they left their retirement. They can't do it anymore. So how do you retain it? Well, first of all, you need to get into the universities and tell them how great teaching in the classroom is, because that goal is not there anymore. There aren't, they're not providing any more education students. There's not enough. Where are we gonna get them? If we can't even keep the older ones who have been there for 25-plus years, who have no longer decided to be there, they're having to choose between their careers and their children, and they can't do it anymore.
Ms. Preston?
To go back to the last question for just a moment, coming out of Providence Hall's first class, there was one student who was considering going into teaching. I've talked to her lately about it, her primary concern's money. I began asking the teachers who I speak with regularly to tell me, "Would you send your own children into education?" Not one of them has said yes, that they would encourage their own children to go into education right now. We have an issue, and I do believe it does go back to the respect factor. Where was Erin? And bringing up the UEA, Lisa's implying that I follow the UEA mandates, she is implying that I follow my partners. Where was Erin? I was starting a school, I was running a school, I was hiring and managing hundreds of teachers, and teachers I continue to defend now. Multiple of them are in the room right now. The credentialing question, APT credentialing. I believe that there is a lot to be learned with a teacher license that cannot be taught through just subject matter expertise. I would prefer to see, excuse me, I would prefer to see the credentialing, not, the APT credentialing not apply to core subject teachers. That being said, for our students to become college and career-ready, we are going to need to have specialists in the classroom who specialize in things that are not necessarily best taught in schools right now. For instance, IT skills, I think is a good area to have somebody who's a subject matter expert be mentored in the classroom. For that, we also need to have mentors in the school to come assist them in these areas.
Just to follow up on the question of teacher credentialing and on an issue that you just raised. According to the Utah Education Association President Heidi Matthews, "The new policy allowing untrained teachers into the classroom may benefit affluent districts, but, quote, 'low-income students will lose out.'" Likewise, a 2012 study from Stanford University found that high-income schools are up to 10 times as likely to have uncertified or unprepared teachers as more affluent schools. Would you agree with the claim that this policy, if it remains in place, may harm low-income students? And if so, how can we balance the benefits of this policy for those students, specifically in the sorts of scenarios that you're describing where it's a specifically trained teacher like IT or a specialized field?
So Heidi and I have slightly different views on this. I think that our current education system is disadvantaging low-income schools. Providence Hall is a Title I school. I understand what that means. I have helped in the construction and setup of multiple Title I schools, including some that have over 50% ELL populations. That means students whose primary language is not English. These are hard schools to teach in. You are dealing with a lot of different kids with a lot of different needs, and yes, this is not the first place that a lot of teachers choose to go. So if you have a shortage of teachers, they're going to go to the schools where they are either paid more, or where they have more resources, or perhaps fewer difficulties. We need to bring more teachers in the classroom, and that means a lot of different things. This licensure path, like I said, I believe it applies to some areas, not to others. I would still prefer to have core talk in some areas, however, for instance, having a language support APT teacher who could support other teachers in an ELL school would be an appropriate use of this license.
Ms. Cummins, would you like to address, it sounds like you were saying that the policy of certifying teachers without formal teaching training is perhaps not preferable, but is a necessary way of addressing the teaching shortage? And if so, how can that policy be pursued in a way that doesn't create or worsen an achievement gap between low-income schools and rural schools and schools with a greater degree of resources?
Right, well, you talk about achievement gaps, so that Every Student Succeeds Act asks for a grading of the schools, and that impacts teachers already. So how does that correlate with a district, say, like Grant School District, where this district is the number-one test base for all the new programs that happen in the state of Utah? You know, how do all of those transient and low-income students continue to succeed with a new program every year, a new testing program every year, a new, a new class management every year? They're not going to. These kids are expendable to the state, and it's wrong. How is this, how is it gonna change with the teachers? It's not until we get our act together and we clear up the mandates, we allow teachers to teach, and allow those who have a passion of a subject to come in and inspire children. That's what teachers do, and that's what they do best.
Okay, let's turn our attention to a different topic, and that's the ranking of Utah schools nationally. According to Education Week's annual quality counter report, Utah currently ranks 31st in education. On the one hand, this is an improvement over past rankings that placed Utah in the 40s among the 50 states. On the other hand, some citizens in Utah have been quoted in local media arguing that we have a legislature that is intent on carrying on a war against public education. How would you assess Utah's current national ranking? What steps would you take, what steps would you take or encourage the legislature to take to improve Utah's current ranking? And how do you plan to address the public's concern about these rankings? Ms. Cummins?
It's all about local control, local control, local control. I cannot stress that enough. All of these mandates, all these regulations, the testing, having to do with the teachers, how frequent we need to test, what we need to test on, how much money is applied, the, you know, the threatens and the bullying that comes down from the federal mandates that impact our students is huge. I have with me a just-released Jordan School District bond information, and it says, "The ATC scores for Jordan average is 20% composite. The state average is 19.8. AP test for Jordan is 67.7. Pass rate, the state is 66." Is Jordan doing good? Yes. Can they do better? Absolutely. Get the federal government out, get the state mandates off of the teachers, and let them go to task. I think we can soar so much higher. I think our kids are so much smarter, and I think our teachers are brilliant. Let's allow them to do it.
Ms. Preston?
One of the great things about Utah is we always do more with less. So 31st in the nation, given that we are 51st in the nation for funding, might actually be seen as something positive. That being said, we can do better. We do need more money, that's certainly part of it, but we need the money to go to the right places, and we need there to be accountability for that, we need there to be success for that. Some of the advantages that we have here in Utah is we have very active parents, we have very committed teachers, I think we have very high-quality teachers who are very committed to addressing a lot of the unique needs that we have here. That being said, we have just a poor level of college and career readiness, and some of the rankings go to ACT scores, college attendance rate. Our rates are actually dropping by some statistical measures in this area. We need to prepare more students for college and careers. That means careers, maybe technical education, but also for college. Although we are sending students to college, they are not graduating at a very high rate. This area, South Jordan, has a 29% college graduation rate. The district, the totality of District 11 is closer to 20%. We can't send all of our kids to college, and what kids we do send to college, we need to have be able to graduate from that. For that, we need to have high standards, we need to have high expectations, and we need to have teachers with the complexity to teach different students different ways so that each can be successful.
Both of you mentioned a previous points in the debate, the Every Student Succeeds Act, so let's focus our attention on that for a minute. In light of the recent adoption of this act in 2015, a multitude of questions have emerged regarding both the effectiveness and practicality of this act, which is a replacement for No Child Left Behind. The Deseret News is quoted on September 13, 2016, observing that, "As with any new policy, implementation will be critical to the Every Student Succeeds Act's success. States will need to carefully select meaningful, tractable indicators and achievable goals that focus on learning outcomes." Given that, what should the ESSA's implementation in Utah look like, and why is this the most effective form of implementation? Ms. Preston?
The ESSA allows the states to independently create their own goals and metrics, but they do have to create goals and metrics. Having been in business and having run a school, you have to have goals and metrics. You need to, as a team, understand, have a common understanding of where you're all going together. I do think one of the areas for improvement is having the education world, the Board of Education, and the legislature have more productive conversations and more fluid conversations, perhaps including more parents and students in the conversations, but also perhaps more well-intended conversations. There's some animosity that exists on each side that's leading to cutting off of some kind of communications, where I think both parties are well-intended in looking for solutions. A lot of those conflicts come in the area of testing and how we assess students. I have served on two task forces dedicated to education funding and one dedicated to Title I, serving Title I populations. I've seen great solutions come out of those task forces that have not yet been implemented. I think if we work with the legislature, we work with the current education system, we can come up with appropriate goals, appropriate ways to test things that will really advance our children into the next century.
Ms. Cummins, what's your, the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act in Utah look like?
Oh, well, this is a loaded question because it's, there's a fallacy out there that the Every Student Succeeds Act gives more local control to states. And I have in front of me a Reform Support Network, Communications and Engagement Assessment Rubrics. It was printed, this particular one is printed in 2014. I have the PTAs, the National PTAs Assessment, or ESSA Implementation Process currently. The NEA is working on theirs. Many different organizations are working on theirs on how to engage the stakeholders, quote unquote, to implement the ESSA at a state level. Now goodness, I thought the ESSA was local control. Now, why is the Department of Education working with the PTA, the NEA, and other conglomerates to help us implement the ESSA at a state level? So they want more parental, where can parents and families access information to the state's role in the ESSA? This is the federal. This is the national PTA. What is the state's timeline to develop its new state plan into the ESSA? How will the state determine what constitutes a student subgroup to be consistently underperforming? You know, there's, you can read this. You can read this. We're being told what to do and how to do it. How do we do that? Well, we need to first acknowledge that there's federal intrusion coming into our state in the form of state legislators making laws that will affect our children. It's wrong, and we've got to stop it and stand up to it.
Right. I want to talk about this question for just maybe a minute longer with each of you. Given that the act does provide an opportunity to perhaps at least reboot or think about how we approach assessment in terms of education in the state, how do you think that we can learn from past assessment readings that you think have been adequate or inadequate? What are sort of the opportunities that can guide our implementation of this new act since it does provide an opportunity to rethink that? Ms. President.
State is, state standards are something I really believe in. We need to have high standards, and we need to ensure that we have the resources to achieve those standards. With the elimination of the Common Core, we need to craft our own Utah standards, but they need to be high standards. Now, how each local area, local school implements those, there should be some flexibility. I've seen the culture of schools vary dramatically, and where there's a good culture that is unique to that school, great success can happen. Now, we still need to maintain at a macro level some means of assessing how we are actually doing. So I support the idea of moving to ACT testing at the high school level, perhaps eliminating Sage at the high school level so that we can use the ACT tests. It gives us a standard, reliable, and nationwide assessment for our students to be able to see how they're doing against their peers and how they're going to be able to do against other colleges. Sage is broken, but it is not irredeemable. It needs to be shortened. It needs to be given less frequently, but we do still need to have statewide testing.
Sage was never a validated test. It's never been validated to prove that it says what it does, what it's supposed to do. With the Every Student Succeeds Act under federal law, we have to provide a state assessment and provide that data to the federal government. Again, data needs to stay closest to home, not at the federal level. With testing, the board, the state school board did get rid of Sage for the high school students, and they are implementing the ACT and Aspire ACT tests at the 10th, 11th, 90th, and 11th levels. They are talking about getting rid of Sage for the elementary levels. Now, I believe in that we're over-testing. If we're going to compare ourselves on a global level, Finland tests one time, China tests one time. Why do we have to continually test? Do we need to do intermittent to make sure that we're on the right track? Possibly, but that's, those scores need to stay in the classroom with the teachers and the parents.
Thank you. Well, both of you definitely have lots to say about Sage, and that's the next topic we will address in the debate. After three years of recorded Sage test results, the Utah State Board of Education found that across the state, grade averages have actually gone down. On September 15th, 2016, the Deseret News released an article saying the number of Utah schools with an AB average is down 8% from last year. Only 54% of schools statewide are meeting this criteria. Furthermore, they found the number of Utah high schools with a DF average has doubled from 16 to 33. The number of elementary schools with this low average also increased from 58 to 85. Do these decreases, as some would argue, reveal flaws in the testing system? And if so, what are those flaws? Or do they reveal growing problems in Utah schools? And if so, what are those growing problems? If elected, how would you encourage the board to respond to this data? Ms. Cummins.
This is all predetermined. I've watched this for the last six years. I've said this was coming. Our kids are going home with PTSD. You talk to psychologists, they've seen a rise in their, in their clinicians, clinics, with their clinicians of children coming with headaches, stress, sleep disorders. They can't finish the homework. It is disrupting family, is putting parents against children and teachers. This is wrong. What are we doing to our families? This is wrong. Parents should not be placed in a position where they have to fight for their kids like this, and they should not be fighting against the teachers. We need to be working together. This was planned. This is no accident. The Common Core was written by, by individuals who were not prepared to adequately prepare our children. We have self-proclaimed Marxists who wrote the LA. We have a math standard writer who said that the math was not to get these kids into university and secondary, two-year college at best, and if you wanted to do more, you had to do more than Common Core. This is to set up our kids. This is, this is wrong. This whole implementation was fast, pulled the rugs under the teachers and under the parents. We were not included in this discussion, and they slid by the seat of their pants and implemented the Common Core. And now what we, what do we have six years later? We have a huge mess.
Ms. President.
So I'll address the Sage testing. We used to have different testing methodologies. It was A, B, C, D, or the test choices. You could game a test fairly easily, and direct instruction or rote instruction resulted in pretty high test scores. It didn't show critical thinking skills, however, and it was one of the things that we weren't being able to assess properly. In the creation of the Sage test, there was an attempt made, I believe, to try and assess deeper level understanding. The questions were created by teachers. They went through a public reading process. I've had teachers who were part of the creation of that, of the Sage questions. Now, it didn't implement well because the questions became very long and cumbersome. So there's a, there's a fatigue factor in this. You can spend an enormous time in a year testing students, and at some point, they learn that the more questions they get right, the longer the test goes. And so, as my 11-year-old son tells me he did after the fact, he wanted to go play football with his friend, so he just answered a bunch of questions quickly so that he could go play football because the test wasn't relevant to him. Now, that's the real problem with Sage. We've allowed parents to opt their students out, and I think that that can be an appropriate thing to do. However, we've created a test that is burdensome, long, and cumbersome, and so it's becoming irrelevant for the students because it's irrelevant for the parents, because it's irrelevant for the teachers, because we have so many people opting out of the test that we no longer have relevant data. In some schools, as we have a size of 50% opt-out rate, we need a test that becomes relevant. Finland and China don't test once. They test once every three years. That's, that might be an option for us.
Ms. Cummins, I have a follow-up question for you. In the absence of something like Sage testing, what would be an effective mechanism for assessment of public schools in your opinion?
For public schools or students?
For students.
For students?
Yes.
Certainly, teachers can assess their students, and that data needs to stay in the schools. Can you have a percentage of grades, like all of the fourth grade, and their cumulative testing scores come together? Yes, you can send that up. And, you know, at that point, it becomes a free market situation. I know my parents moved me when I was 12 years old to one of the top five school districts in the nation. I think parents have that right to decide where, you know, where their best, best location needs to be to help their child, based on the needs of that child. Every child's going to be different. Every school district can be different. Let's allow that to happen.
Before we take a couple of questions for the, from the audience, I have one more about a topic you all have touched on, and that's college and career readiness. This year, the US News and World Report conducted a survey of over 21,000 schools and ranked the top 2,673. Only 26 Utah schools were ranked at all. There were no Jordan District schools on this list. This was partially due to, in the perspective of US News and World Report, low college-ready scores. Bingham High School, for example, had the highest score in the district at a 24.6 on a 100-point scale. In light of this data, do you think that the state and individual districts are doing enough? If not, what would you like to see the state and individual districts do differently? Ms. President.
This is one of my key issues. No, we're not doing enough. We're not preparing our kids for the future. We're teaching the bare minimum, really, necessary of what has been taught for a long time. We are not comparing them with the critical thinking skills that they need to be able to move into a different time, into a different job market. We have a lot of jobs in Utah. We've done a good job of attracting a good economy with a lot of open jobs. We do not have students to fill those jobs. Some of those are college jobs. Some of those are straight out of high school jobs. But whatever the jobs, we need to have students who are prepared to fill them. I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to begin informing students and their parents at younger and younger level, this is what the job market looks like, and this is how you can be prepared to enter the job market. I'm talking about eighth, ninth grade. We have these areas of unfulfilled opportunity where we do not have educators in schools to help train students to go into those areas. If the students and parents understood those areas that existed, they might pay a little bit more attention. Math class might become a little bit more relevant if a student understands how he might use it in, say, a construction or a trade field where he can see it being applicable. If it becomes relevant to them, it will become applicable. Part of this is we have so little resources to do anything with. This falls in the outside edges of where we need more resources to go to different areas to train kids differently based on their own capabilities and their own options.
Ms. Cummins.
Again, this is about federal control. Common Core was not meant to help your kids be college and career-ready. I really do not like that term. Right now, we have, we, I went to a summit with Erin. We were at the same meeting, and they asked the kids, how many kids are interested in tech careers? Four or five raised their hands out of groups of five, of five, groups of FPLA children from all five high schools in the Jordan School District. Four or five? Nobody. And they said, and, you know, Lieutenant Governor Cox was there saying, you know, how much of a need that we, that we have all these jobs for programmers, for tech, tech individuals, and so on and so forth, and nobody wanted to go on these jobs. I met a masonry, a mason worker, and he said the median job is 54, and he's willing to pay $30 an hour to anyone who's willing to show up for the job. We're not inspiring our kids, period, to work. Where is the love of pursuit of happiness? Where is individualism? Where is the strength of being an American and being creative in our thinking and not just critical thinking skills? We are shorting our kids and their futures by limiting what we provide them.
Thank you both. We now like to invite members of the audience who'd like to pose questions to the candidates to do so. If you'd like to ask a question of the candidates, remember, keep it brief, and try to frame your question in a way that both candidates can speak to the topic that you're raising. If you are interested, if you'll step toward the front of the room, our timekeeper has a microphone, and if you'd speak into that, that will allow us to have it as part of tonight's recording. Does anyone want to present a question to the candidates? Raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Considering what you just said about preparing children for doing something work-wise, you said you didn't want, or that people were not ready for technical careers or masonry jobs. So what, how would you encourage them? For what job are you encouraging them for? Does that make sense?
I want them to pursue their own happiness. I want them to know what jobs are out there and enhance their talents and let them, let them go for it. Why limit them on just critical thinking skills? Let them think outside the box and be creative in thinking skills. What inspires them? What drives them? What is the character behind them? Because we are going to be facing tough times. There are 95 million Americans out of jobs right now. Why? Why are we not providing those vacant jobs to those who are, are not looking? Why? We have no inspired teaching going on because our teachers are overworked. They're tired. They're doing the best they can, and these kids are mocking what's going on. They're not dumb. I want to inspire them. I want them to dream big. We are Americans. We need to act like it.
Ms. President.
First of all, critical thinking skills are creative thinking skills. Critical thinking skills are what I learned in law school, isocratic-based teaching with the idea that you presented those different options, and you come up with solutions for what you're going to do with those options. I think that that is at the core of what we need to be teaching our students, is how to figure things out. We are moving into a world where we can't predict what the jobs are going to be, where we can't predict what technology is going to be used. We can't even predict the problems that they're going to have to solve. The best thing that we can do is we can teach them how to think and how to figure things out. Now, pursuing their own happiness, that would be great, except I would have in my own sons, a jazz musician and actor and NFL football player, if they were all just left to pursue their own passions. I would like them to be employed. Given that, I would like them to have the capability to pursue different opportunities once they grow out of the jazz musician, NFL football player phase, like I was. I was prepared by good teachers who were preparing me more than I realized I was being prepared with the core fundamentals, those applied throughout my life.
I want to try to get one more audience question in. We do want to make sure that folks who are here tonight get to engage with the conversation. So is there someone else who would like to ask? Yes, ma'am.
Are you pointing to me?
Yeah.
I have two. First of all, I think we live in a nation who has maybe a bit too much federal regulation. It's very clear that it's not constitutional that we have the Department of Education and the federal government. What will you do to start unentangling us from the, just the really infiltration of the federal government, if indeed you feel like there is? If you don't feel like there is that intrusion, will you please explain your stand on, on how the federal government impacts our education in the state?
Ms. President, you get to address this question first.
Okay. I think that the federal government has a rightful job of ensuring federal law, and federal law as applied to, as applied to students means falls in really three areas. So first, students who learn differently, students with disabilities. Every student born into this country deserves to have access to a free and appropriate public education that manifests as the special ed programs, 504 programs, and other programs that help learners who learn differently receive the resources that they need to learn as best they can. We also have programs for poverty, Title I programs, free and reduced lunch, and then we have programs for, to prevent discrimination through the Office of Civil Rights and others so that based on race, religion, whatever else, there is no discrimination, and all students are given access to education. Those are the core means for us to have federal support, I believe, in implementing federal law. Beyond that, I think everything should be open to, does this benefit us or not? Does this make our kids better or not? And I think that that gets into a lot of different areas. I would generally go local controls.
That's time on that question. If you'd like to respond to that question, and also perhaps take an initial 30 seconds to address what you were indicating earlier.
Sure. You talk about federal control. It's a web of a mess with the careers and coming, career and college-ready career information. We have what's called the Strengthening Career in Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, HR 5587. It is a bill that passed in the House of Representatives in Congress, and it is moving through the Senate. This bill will put what Erin wants to happen is by the time they're in seventh or eighth grade, put them on a track for a career without their choice to, without a chance to choose their career after that in high school, in college. How many times have you changed your career, your path from the time you were fifth grade, you know, fifth grader wanting? I was a ballet dancer for the most of my life. I don't know about you. You know, I was going to dance with the Northwest Ballet. You know, I was going to dance with the Northwest Ballet, didn't happen. I became a mom, which was even greater. But, and then you have, you talk about federal control over special needs and other things. How about this? We have, for the state of Utah, we adopted what's called, we adopted the Council for Exceptional Children, what every senator must know. This is an international set of standards for special needs that have adopted in the state of Utah. We have no control over these standards anymore. This is international. We have no local control? Local control is where it's needed and best. We don't need a federal government to tell us how to act, how to be kind, how to be compassionate, how to help each other. This is wrong and federal intrusion has got to stop. Where's the line?
Before we move to concluding statements, there's one topic we haven't addressed yet that I think we should before we conclude tonight's debate, and that's the role of parents in the success of education and the success of students in Utah. A review from the National Education Association finds that, quote, "Regardless of family income or background, students with involved parents are more likely to pass their classes, attend school regularly, and go on to those secondary education." How would you work to get parents more involved in Utah schools? Ms. Cummins.
We need to teach them what they can and cannot do according to the federal government. It's a lot. We need to stand up to our state legislators and tell them what we can and cannot do. By the Utah State Constitution, parents are the primary caretakers of their children's education. Do parents understand that? Do they know what that means? For the longest time, I was treated as not an expert. I didn't know what was right for my kids. Until I woke up one day and said, if I, if I don't do something for my kids, nobody else will. And I helped my kids, I worked hard for them, I work to support them, I try to protect them as best I can and navigate what they need to know. Do I open them up to situations and questions? Absolutely. Question everything. You've got to find the truth, and parents need to know the truth, that they are the experts of their children. Once they understand that, then they believe, they believe in themselves, they believe they can help their kids. The morality has gone down, we've got to build that back up. And teachers, I think you can help. Parents understand their children, allow them to come in and help that.
Ms. Preston, how would you work to get parents more involved?
I'm going to readdress a couple of things that were brought up. First, I'm not putting kids on track to be, have careers selected for them by SAGE 303, but I do love the idea of parents and students entering into substantive conversations with facts and analysis of opportunities that may be available to them, so parents can begin having discussions with their kids on what is it that you would like to do? What are your options in life? I think that that's a great way for parents to help guide their children and begin to really have those deep conversations. Said, yes, we, I'm going to readdress that. We do have a need for federal control because my opponent has suggested that students who have special ed services or needs should not be educated with normal students.
Yes, I want to address that.
And you are welcome to, because you've said it a few times. I think that we, I think that we have had times where we need to ensure that free and appropriate education is available to everyone, and that means parents who are advocating for a free and appropriate education for their children. Some, sometimes that means different things. Now, I, as an attorney, have advocated for parents' rights with districts, I have worked with parents on behalf of districts to help them support their students. I absolutely believe that parents are the first and most important advocates for their children. However, I also want my children to be taught from people who are smarter than me, and I want to facilitate and encourage that teaching and I want to support that as well.
Now we reach concluding remarks, and you can have an opportunity to address that during this. Each candidate will get three minutes, and Ms. Cummins will begin with her closing remarks.
Okay. Regarding special needs, I did not say that we need to separate special needs children or any children from a public or any situation. I think that's wrong. I have a niece who has Down Syndrome, she has leukemia, and she's in the hospital. Why would I want to separate her from my children? If you want to know the truth, you can go look at the full debate that was posted on my, on my website at lisa cummins.us. The question was asked about dyslexia, and my answer was I did not know the full details about dyslexia. What I did expand on was the federal intrusion and the expanding definition to include children of special needs under the same testing criteria as other children. I think it's wrong. Children are individual. And they, and not all tests, test their talents and their skills. Now, I am very much against federal intrusion. I am fighting for my kids. Socialism is being taught today. We don't have the freedoms that we think we have. We're not going to have the freedoms that they, that we think we have now. We've got to stand up and have a backbone. I have a problem with, with my opponent being that, not on a personal level, absolutely not, but being that she is an attorney with layer and layer and that her law partner is also running in the 7th District. And if the two of them get on the state school board, that would be the largest law firm on our state board, making money off of education for their pockets and policies and making policies for our children. I know you're shaking your head. Really? How can she say that she would step aside? There would be too many things that she would have to step aside from. I have no one backing me. I do not have the UEA, I do not have the NEA, I do not have anybody backing me except constituents who believe and fight for their children, believe in local control, and want that voice heard on the board. It is essential.
Ms. Preston, Ms. Cummins McGaner debate tonight, and you get the opportunity to conclude it.
All right. The way we ensure ongoing freedom in our society is to have students who are going to analyze each situation and ensure that their society manifests the modern version of what our founding fathers envisioned for them. That means they need to critically, they need to learn how to think critically, they need to stand up for what they believe is right, they need to move forward the future that is of their own making, not of ours. A couple of points that were recently brought up. We are doing, well, we are doing well with what we have, but we're not doing as well as we could do with what we have. My opponent has frequently mentioned that I am backed by the UEA. I was endorsed by the UEA, which is actually an odd thing. I don't think they've ever endorsed a charter person before. I was not going to turn down the support of a group of teachers. I have received more support and more funding, however, from others outside of the UEA, including teachers and parents. Almost every donor that I have had, no, actually, every donor that I have, I have had is either a parent of a Utah student or a teacher. Most of them have been both. They are backing me because they believe I can actually do something with this position. The issue of me having a conflict was raised. I do have a law partner who is also running for the state board of education. She and I do not report to each other, we don't work for each other, we are independent attorneys in a large firm. There is no conflict, there has never been a conflict, and frankly, on politics, we disagree more than we agree, and I expect our voting record will likely show that as well. I am independent, I am beholden to no one. I am doing this because I feel that this is the right thing to do and because I feel that I can bring some civility to the state board of education and to the education system where we can do more with what we have. We do have good opportunities, we do have good assets, we're not doing enough with them at this point. College and career readiness, physical transparency, local control, those are my primary objectives, but civility and working together is how those need to be accomplished. Thank you.
That concludes tonight's debate. Please join me once again in thanking both Ms. Lisa Cummins and Ms. Erin Preston and the candidates vying to represent District 11 on the Utah State School Board. I'd like to join me in thanking Rachel Sanders, Josh Cantor, and the team of ABU Education Fund for organizing tonight's debate. I think I can speak for them and the John R. Park Debate Society when I say it's our shared belief that open public dialogue and debate like what you saw tonight is the cornerstone of a healthy democracy. In an era when voter participation is often at all-time lows, it's essential that each of us remembers the importance of active participation in our local, statewide, and national governments. We hope that you will begin that engagement with us tonight by sticking around to participate in a meet and greet with these two candidates who have generously agreed to share their time with you. And of greatest importance, be sure to vote. It's easy, it's painless, and it's the most important thing you can do as a member of your community. Thank you and good night.